Called order, welcome everybody. Got special Grand Forks City Council meeting Monday, November 22nd. Roll call, please, Marine.
Weigel.
Here.
Doppler.
Here.
Weber.
Mock.
Here.
Cavami.
Here.
Sandy.
Here.
Veen. We have form.
Thank you. 1.2, Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, 1.3, normally mayor's announcements normally don't in these special meetings, but just had two quick things. They're kind of timely. First, just wanted prayers and thoughts to the family of General Al Palmer. It was really sad to see his passing. You don't only get to know the man for a couple of years, and it's pretty rare that someone can move you and change the way you live your life after such a short period of time. I don't think I'm the only one, so just wanted to send prayers and well wishes to his family. And secondly, on some more promising news, I know Mr. Lund, ahead of the school board meeting, I had a brief update on the CTE Center and a pretty good story, so if you want to take the dais now, please.
Thank you, Mayor Brusinski, members of the council. It's a real pleasure to be here this evening. I'm happy to report that three political subdivisions, city, county, and the school district, two civic organizations, the Economic Development Corporation and Chamber, two foundations, four individuals, and more than 60 businesses have all come together, and we have achieved our $10 million fundraiser goal and had raised nearly $10.2 million as of the time that I left for the meeting today. So I'm really proud of that, and I'm happy to report that to you today. I took a little moment to reflect and to celebrate, you know, that accomplishment and really how fortunate we are to live in a community where those organizations can rally around a cause. I want to talk about, if I could, mayor, I know you have an agenda here today, but there's a lot of work that went into that before the requests were made. We needed political support, so I appreciate the support of this body and you, mayor in particular, and Todd, you were a big help as well in terms of fundraising. Mayor, you brought in our first check today. Actually, we have a lot, we have 10 point, nearly $10.2 million worth of equipment. You brought in the first check with the lumber mart when you went over to visit with Bob Peabody earlier today, so I appreciate all your support, and you've been a big, big support. So we needed that political support, we needed a site, and you provided that for us, programming and building design. You know, you can't ask a business for an investment until you can tell them what's in it for them, so all that work needed to be done before we sat across the table and asked for that. I put a brochure of the Impact Academy on your desk, and I wanted to just draw attention to page eight. Tremendous support and volunteers. We have the steering committee, and many of you and many in this room are on it. In addition, there are more, almost 50 volunteers that have dedicated over 1,500 hours to this project, so it's been really rewarding. The fear of just calling out a couple of people because there are so many that I could recognize, I really want to acknowledge two people that really drove this on the ground. I guess I've had the pleasure to come up here and talk about fundraising, that was my piece of it, but as I mentioned, a lot of work had to go into this before we could sit across the table and ask somebody for anything. So the people that really drove this were Eric Ripley, the director of current technical education from Grand Forks Public Schools. So he ran the education side of things, and Becca Kruger, who's in the audience tonight, and I want to personally thank and congratulate her, she really organized this tremendous campaign and initiative from our standpoint, from the business side of things, so it's really fantastic. As I mentioned, all that work was done before we sat across from the company. And speaking of that, we had our first conversation, we made our first request on September 13th. Today is day 70 from that marker, so we raised nearly 10 point, the team raised nearly $10.2 million in less than two and a half months, so it's really rewarding. So I really, really couldn't be prouder of the steering committee and all the volunteers that came together, couldn't be prouder of all the companies that have invested, and I really couldn't be prouder to be living in this region than I am today. So thank you for the opportunity to provide the update, mayor.
Thank you, sir, and I think goes without saying that we appreciate the work that you have done yourself on this without taking charge and getting all those groups together. This wasn't going to happen, and this speaks to the relationships with the business community, the political subdivisions, and everybody in town, so thank you.
Thank you, mayor. It's a real pleasure to provide the update.
Anybody got any questions, or Keith, then we'll move on? All right. Only one agenda item, so two public hearings and second reading of ordinances?
2.1, public hearing and second reading and final approval of an ordinance establishing and designated boundary lines of wards and precincts for elections, updated with Ponderosa alternate A.
Thank you. Is Mr., oh, there it is, Mr. Jonas, did you want to give us an update on what you changed? Oh, you got a couple alternates on Ponderosa now, so you want to let us know where that, and then we'll open it up, because tonight will be final action on this, so.
Mayor, members of the council, just a real brief update. We didn't have a lot of feedback or comments from you, so we took the comments from our previous meeting, and we came up with one alternative option to the Ponderosa plan that takes into account that Oxford Street area that was mentioned in Ward 1 and Ward 2. I can kind of show you exactly what it is. It's this block right here, takes this residential block, adds it into Ward 2, subtracts those 68 from Ward 1 and moves them in. It's a fairly easy move, it moves residential homes in with residential homes, like was mentioned at the meeting, and keeps the university dorms and university neighborhood kind of, kind of together. The only thing that, that that does is it does push us over our exact 3% number that we wanted to stay within. It still doesn't take us any great distance out. Our lowest on the negative side is 2.4, and our highest on the positive side is 3.6, so we're still very close to that 6% that we want to be within on the plus and minus side. So tonight, really, all I have for you is the only feedback that we worked with was, was that one area, so we either have the Ponderosa original plan without that notch or the Ponderosa with the alternative one.
All right, thank you, and if, yeah, if you just want to stay close, so we, granted, these are two options, we can certainly start over from scratch, or do whatever, whatever council wishes, so with that, at this time, I'd just open it up to council comment.
Thank you, mayor. I apologize because I wasn't here or wasn't able to be on the line when we went through this the first time, so this is my first time to be able to comment publicly a little bit about the proposal. I had, I looked at, I thought the city did a, and Dan, you did a great job of trying to lay this thing out, the committee you had and how we put everything together, looking at the ideal population size, the plus or minus that you said we just slightly went over, aligning with the state legislative districts and the limiting of the precincts, ward and neighborhood continuity and awareness of growth. I probably, I, well, the one thing I guess I would like to have seen us do is have a little bit more awareness of the growth, or not just awareness, to identify the growth that will happen, so that we don't immediately get the populations off with the first subdivision that comes in. We, we don't know exactly where the growth is, I know, but there are some areas that we feel pretty strongly about. And I also liked, I think especially with what you came up with, your alternate of the Pine alternate, I think, is that the one that was the latest one that just came I looked a little bit more at how you could keep neighborhoods together. The current ward and precinct alignment with the revision that comes to the Pine alternate kind of brings everybody together in that downtown and really a tight area. I looked at it, between University Avenue and Minnesota, there's nine blocks. If you had somebody living on one and then within the downtown area and then on the other side of Minnesota, within nine blocks, you could have three different council people, all from the downtown area. And so that was troubling for me, that, that type of condensing didn't necessarily make sense for me. As I looked at that, I looked at, I'm going to say, the Birch option, and Birch really takes the downtown area and, and I think makes for better neighborhood alignment. You could clearly see the, the continuity, we'll say, of those. And then, Dan, maybe you can bring that up?
Yeah, I'll try to bring that one up real quick.
It alleviates the large population in Ward 6. I think it, well, all of those specifically got us within alignment, right? We were within the populations that we were trying to get to, and, and that was accomplished, I thought, in a better way, where, again, we have the neighborhoods better represented and had, in some ways, the growth identified. One thing that's going to happen downtown, as we know, there is a lot of potential with all the new apartments and the growth that we projected downtown that's going to occur, and there's other projections in Ward 5 as you go south, too. So anyway, I, I think that that's a better alignment. I think, I think, I look at it, we have a certain level of trying to figure out how to modify the lines artificially to make sure we all are, stay in our wards, and I'm thinking that the Birch option is the better option. That's all I want to say.
Thank you, Mr. Veen.
With all due respect to my good friend, Mr. Veen, I don't think people particularly care who represents them. I think if you are, if any of us are doing our jobs, we're representing the people for whom we were elected to represent, regardless of whether somebody else is representing the person across the street or not. No matter what, because our wards, you know, they butt up against one another, you're always going to have somebody on, on one side of the street representing one group and somebody on the other side of the street representing somebody else, so I, I personally don't think, I don't think it's necessary to, I don't think it's necessary to try to single out the downtown, specifically the downtown groups as being underrepresented. If anything, having three, you know, having the potential for three council members that close would give them a benefit rather than being a negative, in my, in my opinion.
And that's the argument I'm making. I agree.
Sure. Okay, well, okay, that makes sense, then.
Good, roll in agreement.
Sure. So I guess personally, unless, I understand, I think now I understand Mr. Veen's point. I, I don't think it's necessary to, because we equally represent our wards as well as the folks across the community, frankly, I've done more work, in the last year, I've done more work in Ward 4 than I've done in, in Ward 6 because of certain issues that we've had going on. It, it, it's neither here nor there. We have personal relationships with people all over our community, and we represent, we represent them as, as necessary. So I, I'm personally in favor of Adam's Ponderosa map with the new alternative one, moving those 68 people, and so I believe that that provides a good representation for the citizens of Grand Forks. We all know that the downtown area is going to grow. We also know that the area by Walmart in Ward 1 is going to grow. We also know the craters have come forward and they want to grow south of 62nd and Ward 5, and certainly, there's a whole bunch of area in Ward 6 to the south that, that's going to fill in, so I think it's really hard for us, although some will say that you can put a statistical probability to what areas of town are going to grow. That's a snapshot in today and not representative of how things change over the next 10 years. So with all of that said, Mr. Merrill, I'll make the motion that we adopt the Ponderosa with alternative one.
Thank you, President Sandy. We got a motion on the floor, do we have a second?
I have a second.
Got a second from council member Weigel, is that you, sir?
That's correct, mayor.
Thank you. Got a motion, second, further, further comment. Yes, please, Vice President Mock.
I just wanted to make a comment because I don't, in the Birch option, I don't believe I'm in Ward 4 if that's the option we go with, and I want to make sure that we consider what we want to do for the city and not plan around an address and not, I just want to take that off the table for planning, so that if we want to have that conversation about neighborhoods and what value that may bring, that we do that without considering anybody's address and make sure that nobody is voting based on that knowledge. I do wonder, Adam, under that option, when we look at, I assume with Ward 5.
Which option, do you want to pull up?
Oh, which option do you have up right now, is that?
This one's the Birch.
This one's the Birch, okay. So with that option, I assume that you're underfilling 5 just a little bit for anticipated growth, so that one is at negative 1.3%, so that it would have some room for growth?
That's correct, yeah.
Okay, and then 6, are you expecting less growth in that one? Because that one looks like it's at plus 1.4?
It, it, it really kind of comes, it's very, even though it looks like big percentages, it, you know, it's really only the difference of, you know, plus or minus 100 people or 150 people here or there, so it, sometimes the percentages can make it seem like it's, it's a bigger variation, but really, you know, we're looking at maybe 150 people in that variation between the two. And the hard part with that is, you know, just like that very small university block had 68 people, when we get in the south end, especially in that 32nd and 47th, one block may have 800 or 900 people sometimes with apartment units and, and some of the larger developments and streets that aren't always straight, so they tend to wind on quite, quite a bit further for those census blocks.
Well, I, I guess part of the reason I was wondering is because I think Mr. Weigel actually brought it up on one of the earlier discussions, that, you know, we could reasonably expect a fair amount of growth in probably 5 and 6, given any could grow, and if you redeveloped an area and put up apartments where there weren't, you could have a lot of condensed growth in any of the wards, but the ones where we really would expect it, is there, is there value to underfilling those going into a 10-year plan, so that they would be at, you know, maybe fewer people now, so that there's more time to grow? I don't know if we ever really considered that.
We looked at different ways we could do it. I guess we didn't see a lot of, in our research, we didn't see a lot of redistricting that would do that. It's usually always based on the snapshot of what the census data shows. That's kind of what we saw at the state level when we looked at, you know, state districts were, I think that ideal number was right around 16,000 for a district. I don't know exactly what their plus or minus or their deviation was on their percentage, but I don't, I don't know that it's common practice to try to, you know, fill or lessen a bucket with, everything we found, everything was, was kind of based on where we sit today and knowing what we know today, but that's up to, up to you guys to change if you see a change in that.
Has anyone in the city received a complaint because Ward 6 has 50% more people than any other ward? Have we heard any, in the last 10 years, have we heard from anybody that's saying they're being underrepresented? It just doesn't happen. As long as people, as long as we're being responsible to people, they, they don't care if they're only 75% of the representation of the, the next person. People don't care, as long as we're doing what we're supposed to do.
Member Veen, council member Veen.
Can you, Mr. Sandy, tell me why the preferred one is better than the rest?
I think they're all, they all work equally as well. There, there's, I don't, of all of the maps, I haven't seen any one that works any better than anyone else, because we all do what we're supposed to do. We represent the people of Grand Forks.
Look, just take a moment here, I need to do a little housekeeping. We haven't opened the public hearing on this item yet, so I'm going to open the public hearing. There's someone here to speak to item 2.1.
Come on, line up everybody that wants to talk about it.
Step forward.
Line up.
All right, we're going to close the public hearing section. Public hearing is closed. All right, further, further comment by council. I saw nobody, nobody jumping up, so. All right, do we have any further discussion, or I'm going to, I'm going to take a vote on the motion, second on the floor?
Do, do we have a motion on the floor?
Yes, we have a motion from President Sandy on, I believe it's Ponderosa, alternate A1. And we have a second from council member Weber, or Weigel, excuse me. So seeing no further comment, at least on that portion, I'm going to take that to a vote. Why don't we keep it simple and just run it, roll call, vote Marine? So yes or no?
All right, yes or no for Ponderosa alternate A? Weigel?
Yes.
Doppler?
Yes.
Mock?
Yes.
Cavami?
Yes.
Veen?
No.
And Sandy?
Yes.
Motion passes.
All right, the motion passes, 5 to 1, with Veen descending, dissenting, not descending, you're still the same height. That's all we got, so that motion's approved. Got a motion from President Sandy for adjournment, we got a second from Mr. Cavami. We are adjourned, or all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, opposed, same sign, we are adjourned.
Good evening, upon the Grand Forks City Council's Committee of the Whole, Monday, November 22nd, under item 1, called order 1.1, welcome and roll call.
Weigel?
Here.
Doppler?
Here.
Weber?
Mock?
Here.
Cavami?
Here.
Sandy?
Here.
Veen?
Here.
We have a form.
Okay, thank you, under item 2, discussion items. 2.1, request for extension of time of Class 1 general on and off sale alcoholic beverage license for blues, brews, and BBQs. Ms. Gostad, good evening.
Thank you, President Sandy, members of the committee. We have received requests for an extension of time on a Class 1 alcohol license, this council on blues, brews, and BBQs doing business as Muddy Rivers, located at the former townhouse. Operations at this location had ceased in 2020 during the pandemic, first temporary and then eventually lost its business location due to the sale of the property. As part of the COVID emergency orders, licenses had been extended through 2021. We are now going through the process of renewing licenses, and in order to renew a license, the license must be operational or receive approval from the city council for an extension to a date certain or be transferred to a new owner. Mike Blackman is the owner of this license and has held license since 1982. He is requesting city council approve this extension to give him some additional time to either find a new owner or new location. Without approval of the extension, the license will expire at the end of 2021. Mr. Blackman is in attendance tonight and is available for questions, if you should have.
Are there any comments or questions? Have we, have we in the past extended anyone's license?
You know, this, President Sandy, members of the committee, this has happened in the past, looking back in the records, I know, I believe more than one extension has been passed for, I believe at the time, Suite 49, that's the one that comes to mind.
Sure. Does Mr. Gostad have a recommendation of how long we should extend, or we just pull a date out of a hat, or?
I don't have a recommendation for a date certain, it, I don't have a, I don't know what would be a reasonable period of time, it sounds like he's trying to sell.
The other ones were six months, I believe.
Has he asked, six months, or like July 1st?
Would you like to?
Nice to have you here.
Yep, understood. Does anybody have any thoughts?
Move approval.
Approval for what, sir?
For one-year extension, paying the normal fee.
Is there a second? Second by Mock. Any other comments? Hearing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries unanimously.
All right, thank you.
Yep, thank you. Good luck, Mr. Blackman. Item 2.2, budget amendment, Women's Way program. Good evening.
Good evening, President Sandy, members of the committee of the whole. I have for you a budget amendment for the Health Department's Women's, Women's Way program, and this program received a couple of amendments to our state grants in 2020 and 2021, but due to the reasons you can see there, we didn't spend all of the, the funding and didn't amend our budget when we received those. Copies of those amendments are attached, so what we basically need to do is equalize our fiscal years now so that we have the spending authority between now and the end of the year, and I'll be happy to answer any questions. The budget amendment is also attached in two different formats.
Any questions for Ms. Swanson? Hearing none, any thoughts? Moved by Veen. Second by Doppler. Any other comments? Hearing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Ms. Swanson. Item 2.3, bid award, bid number 2021-28, police interceptor utility package vehicles. Good evening, chief.
Good evening, President Sandy, members of the committee. What you have before you is, I want to say basically a housekeeping item that I'm here every year. We put in bids for our fleet, though, as you can see in your report, there was three vendors. We would ask that you would approve the lowest and best bid from Nelson Auto Center, Fergus Falls, Minnesota, in the amount of $157,176.
Any comments? Moved by Cavami. Is there a second? Second by Mock. Any other comments? Hearing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you, chief. Item 2.4, bid award, bid number 2021-29, landfill bulldozer with a trade-in. Good evening.
Good evening, President Sandy and committee members. I am here to ask that you approve the purchase of a landfill bulldozer from Butler Machinery for the trade, after-trade price of $344,450. It will be funded from the landfill lease and rental program, and it will be on a five-year lease.
Great, thank you, Ms. Lipp. Moved by Cavami. Is there a second? Second by Doppler. Any other comments? Hearing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item 2.5, bid award, project 8228, reconstruction of North Fourth Street, Demers Avenue to First Avenue North. Mr. Cranko, good evening.
Good evening, President Sandy and members of the committee. What you have before you is the bid award for the reconstruction of North Fourth Street from Demers to First Avenue. This project is utilizing about $1.6 million of urban grant program funding, and we received three bids on this project. Bids range from about $1.7 million to about $1.9 million. These bids came, the lowest bid came in approximately 9% above the engineer's estimate of about $1.6 million. The overall total project cost is estimated to be about $2.5 million, and with that, staff is recommending awarding the contract to the low bidder, tie that concrete in the amount of $1,743,503.26. in the amount of $1,743,503.26 and contingent upon concurrence with the DOT.
Thank you, David. Any comments or thoughts? Moved by Veen. Second by Mock. Any other comments? Hearing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign.
Thank you.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Cranko. Item 2.6, 2021, 22 street projects, informational-only update. Mr. Lieberman, good evening.
Good evening, President Sandy and committee members. Thank you for the opportunity to provide you our year-end wrap-up. Each year as engineering completes its construction projects for the year, we like to give you a quick summary of what was accomplished, plus also a preview of what we will be proposing for construction in 2022. This staff report has a lot of detail in it, so I will not be going through all the detail. But for those who are listening or for those of you who would like more, please reference that staff report. So, 2021 was a very, very good year for Grand Forks. We executed about $30 million of construction, which is very solid compared to past years. As usual, we have three main programs where that, that amount of funds was applied towards. We have federal and state grant-type projects. We have our residential and commercial business development programs, and then we have our streets rehabilitation and repair projects. So, I'll talk to those three areas quickly. For federal and state funds, we were able to accomplish roughly $15.5 million of construction, three major projects, the reconstruction of North Columbia Road and University Intersection, the, the realignment of intersections at 32nd Avenue South, which addressed significant safety concerns and made improvements at those intersections, and then the Third Street reconstruction. This amounted to about $15 million. The good news story is about $11 million of that was leveraged from federal and state cost share. So, that's great news for residents of Grand Forks. Our second program is our residential development and business development, greenfield sites where we're adding capacity to our transportation network. On the residential development, we constructed a portion of Quarry's 11-3 subdivision, which extended Cherry Street down to 62nd Avenue, connected up that major thoroughfare, and also constructed David Drive as, as part of that subdivision. In Kingsview Eighth, we did not put down paving, but we did put in underground utilities and set ourselves up for paving South 14th Street and Sylvia Circle in 2022. On the business side of that, Edgewood Village had some additional work, and I think we're all familiar with Oscarville paving. Heard that a couple times this year. Got about half that paving in. That's a two-year effort, so we're on track to completing that in 2022. All in all, that's about $8.3 million of private and special assessed investment into our transportation network. The third area is our streets repair and rehabilitation. I won't go through all the projects, but we invested about $6 million repairing asphalt streets, concrete sheets, just aged and degraded pavements that needed replacement. So, we're very pleased with that. And it's worth noting that we were able to fully utilize the half percent sales tax that was put towards this effort, plus the $2.5 million prairie dog funds that were allocated for this. So, thank you for that funding to allow us to accomplish this. One of our major accomplishments this year that I'd like to just mention is the signing of a programmatic agreement with the State Historic Society of North Dakota regarding the maintenance of granitoid streets. Previously, granitoid streets required a significant amount of coordination and additional funding for preservation of that granitoid. It wasn't a handcuff, but it made it very difficult for us to maintain those streets. So, with the signing of our programmatic agreement this year, we set aside four blocks of pavements that we will preserve as a mitigation measure, and it opened up other streets to allow us to repair them or even reconstruct granitoid streets with modern standards. So, you saw that with the Fifth Street Mill and Overlay this year. In 2022, we will be proposing additional reconstruction on Fourth Avenue.
Okay, I'm going to jump ahead to the preview of the 2022 work. You'll see a map on the screen. See if I can widen it a little bit. I'll highlight just some of the features. So, the red streets, or the red lines that you see are the street projects. I'll focus just on those, but if you read the legend, you know, the other symbols, sidewalks, ADA ramps, smaller street repairs, school beacon projects, we're doing a lot of work around Grand Forks in 2022. On the street side of things, if you can follow my cursor, we'll have four larger, excuse me, five larger reconstruction projects that will probably be noticeable as you're driving around Grand Forks. Immediately in downtown, Fourth Street, we'll be reconstructing a section of that, just parallel to the Third Street reconstruction we did this year. That'll be a great improvement in that area. Belmont Road, as we'll jump down to southern portion, we'll be doing Phase Three of that construction, completed Phase Two successfully this year. We'll be extending that north up to 47th Avenue for the third and hopefully final stage of that development. In the central portion, the three red lines you see that I'm hovering over are South 20th Street, South 12th Street, and Oak Street. All three of these are residential neighborhoods. They all have severely degraded asphalt. Usually, it's just a couple inches of very old asphalt that's extremely shattered on top of clay. So, we'll be proposing to reconstruct those in 2022. Some of the other areas that interest, the industrial park, we frequently receive comments from residents as far as, you know, road blowups or conditions of pavement. Industrial Park is one of those that we will be focusing on this year, trying to eliminate some of those areas of very rough pavement that we'd like to improve. So, with that, I'm going to curtail that and open it up for any questions. There's a lot more detail I could go into, but I, for the sake of time, I'll, I'll just stop there and open it up for any questions.
Any comments or questions for Mr., yes, Mr. Veen?
I thought, you know, you guys did a nice job on those turn lanes on 32nd, made a big improvement, but what it really brought out is the rest of 32nd needs to be replaced, too. There's some of those, do you know what year that's planned for?
I do not, but my former friend here might. This is Baltimore Dave's line. Council President Sandy, Councilmember Veen, I believe in the MPO's 2045 Long Range Transportation Plan, I believe that is located, the reconstruction of 32nd Avenue is located in the midterm. So, I want to say that probably falls into 2030 and beyond. If the, if and when the 47th Avenue interchange does go in, sorry, when, when the 47th Avenue interchange goes in, that would be a project that would likely follow.
Yeah, I think, you know, we did that asphalt overlay of that concrete, and some of that's not lasting very long. So, it may be a struggle to get, to go that long, but, okay, thanks.
Council President Sandy, in fact, I remember when that was overlaid to that point, Terry Birk, Councilmember Terry Birk was still on the city council, and he said at that moment, this is never going to last till 2030 something. So, I think we knew it way back then, but, and remember, you guys made the choice of the 47th Avenue interchange in order for us not to add lanes to 32nd. And so, that's why I was whispering to Dave, it's when, because that's really the option we picked so that we, we don't have to expand 32nd. Certainly, we'll have to do some rehabilitation, hope before 2030, so, just as a reminder.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Phelan. Any other comments or questions for Mr. Lieberman? Good information, a lot of good work. This was a great, it was a tremendous year for construction, and we had great weather for it, too, so.
We did.
Yeah, this, this year worked out great. Hopefully, next year, we can see similar. Okay, thank you, Mr. Lieberman. Under information only, there's a link, I'm sure the COVID update will probably get updated tomorrow or?
Yeah, actually, I received an email just before the meeting started from Mr. Doolitz, and due to some staff changeover of duties and technology, that won't be available this evening, but he will get it out tomorrow.
Perfect, great. Okay. Any other comments for the good of the order? Is there a motion to adjourn by Cavami? Thank you. And second by Mock? All those in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. We're adjourned. Thank you.
Thanks for the save on that one.
[laughing]. [inaudible].[1793.21]